Hi Kathy. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Pete, Jake.
You look good.
I'm good.
Good evening. I would welcome you to the November 5, 2012 Waschuggal City Council meeting, and I would invite you to stand and join us in the Pledge of Legions. Thank you. Rose, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Boger.
Here.
Councilmember Polinsky.
Here.
Councilmember Greenly.
Here.
Councilmember Lindsay.
Here.
Councilmember McDaniel.
Here.
Councilmember Shoemaker.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Councilmember Freeman did call to let us know that she was ill this evening and asked to be excused. So move.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Freeman. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our first order of business this evening is a proclamation for some of our veterans, proclamation on National Veterans Remembrance Month. Whereas the city of Waschuggal has always taken great pride and respect for those who have served this great nation in its defense and in the cause of democracy, and whereas the veterans that reside within our community are a vital link in maintaining our standing as a leading city in the great state of Washington, and whereas the benevolent and protective Order of the Elks have made a pledge to never forget or forsake the veterans of our great country and by their actions since 1868 have kept this sacred pledge, and whereas the city now joins with the Elks to proclaim and announce the month of November as National Veterans Remembrance Month in order of the, in honor of the debt we owe all who have served this community and this great nation. Now therefore, I, Sean Gard, Mayor of Waschuggal, do hereby proclaim November 2012 as National Veterans Remembrance Month, and recognize and honor and in recognition and honor to set aside this month as a time of honoring all who have served and encourages all citizens to join in this observance. Dawn, would you like to come up and receive this?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you for being here this evening. Would you like to say a few words?
I would.
I'd like to thank the city of Waschuggal, the mayor and the city council for this proclamation. Sorry to say, you can't make it to the dinner. If you could, anybody is free to come up here. The dinner is free. Our main speaker is Lieutenant Colonel J.D. Linton of the 4th Regate of the 95th Regiment Instant Access, who just got back from Afghanistan, and he's going to put on a PowerPoint. And it's really quite an evening, and we are extremely happy to have the city of Waschuggal involved in it now. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Dawn. We appreciate you being here this evening.
I've got to get into another meeting.
No worries. Thanks, Dawn. The dinner is next Tuesday evening, right during our council meeting.
Thank you.
Unfortunately. Okay, we do have a couple of presentations this evening. The first one, Kathy, you're up first.
I am. Thank you.
Waschuggal Community Education. If you would, come up to the microphone.
I have papers that you can pass around and follow along. Mayor, garden council members, my name is Kathy Douglas-Evans. I manage the community education program at the Waschuggal School District. I've been there for over 20 years, managing it for about the last five. And Waschuggal, the city of Waschuggal and the Waschuggal School District have partnered for over 32 years. I went back to some of our very oldest archive catalogs and found one from 1980 to see that at that time, we were still partnering to bring area residents of all ages quality, affordable recreational opportunities. The city of Waschuggals annual $5,000 contribution represents a cost of 35 cents per city resident, provides, the city of Waschuggal provides a link to the Waschuggal Community Education and Recreation website on their website. The Waschuggal School District contributes $20,000 per year to the program. They provide office and classroom space as well as utilities and the use of school facilities to help minimize class cost. They host the community education website and provides technical computer support. They provide administrative oversight and program management. They provide publicity and support for Parks Department activities and provides a link to the city website. The role of the Waschuggal Community Education Recreation Program is to provide high-quality community recreation courses for area residents. We do have programs for all ages. We've had students as old as 80 years old in our Zumba programs, and we've had, on our online classes, we've had, we had one lady that was 85 that took some classes. And we have three-year-old preschool students, dance students, and so we do try to make sure that there is something for everybody. We advertise programs, register participants, manage logistics of scheduling and facility use, collect fees, and pay instructors. W C E R, that's what our, what you go by is W C E R. Course catalogs are available four times per year, and that is, we have a fall catalog, a winter catalog, we have a combined spring/summer catalog, and then we have another catalog that comes out in June, but it's not a full catalog, it is more of a flyer, because we have a lot more instructors that come forward. Our spring catalog has to be done, and it's sent out to people in April. And so by that time, we have a lot of folks that do sports that don't know what they want to do yet for the summer. So we always have so many more come in that we have an extra flyer that goes out in June. So, a variety of offerings, including educational, fitness, nutrition, finance, sports, dance, crafts, and hobbies. We had 2,006 participants during the fall/winter/spring and summer of 2011, 2012. We had additional 25 participants in our Ed2Go online program, which includes professional and technical offerings. Our instructors, last year, we had 37 instructors that were from Waschuggal. And our payment structure is 60% of the fees are paid to our instructors and 40% are collected to support the program. Our fall 2012 quarter highlights, our fall quarter isn't over with yet, it will be over with about mid-December. But so far, we have 565 registered students. Not, like I said, not all of our classes have started. New additions this fall have included an advanced adult volleyball program. We started a Zumba fitness program up at Cape Horn Sky School. We have one currently have had for about two and a half years at Gau School, but the Cape area had enough folks that wanted to take it, we added one up there. And also, we started a mini-kickers sports camp this fall for ages three to five, and that was, the kids just absolutely loved it. I went a few times and I opened and watched, and it was, it was an absolute kick. The whole gym was full of balls. There must have been 150 of them in there. And it was their, the idea is to have them be with other kids in a group setting, in a team setting, in a real low-key fun environment, to find out how they like, how they would like to be on a team. And along with that, they learn some soccer skills, so that when they go into soccer, they know a little bit about it. So that was a really nice program to be able to start. So that's, that's pretty much what's been happening and continuing to happen this year, and we thank you for your support. And want to know if you have any questions. My number is on the paper if you ever want to ask anything, or if you'd ever like to teach a class, or know anybody who would like to teach a class, please give me a call.
Thanks, Kathy. Any questions from council? So the 85-year-old wasn't taking a Zumba class, was she?
Yes. Actually, she was 80.
John, there is no reason for you and I not to show up now.
Slow Zumba.
Yes.
I can handle it.
Yeah, she, we had, in fact, we have had a few. Also, in our yoga, Tai Chi, they will make it so that it is okay for seniors. They'll bring chairs in. Also, I just found out today, this would be something new that would start in the winter, our Tai Chi instructor is looking at starting a completely new Tai Chi program that is only for seniors, or for people with disabilities. It's a program, I believe, that was started in Eugene, Oregon, and is for people with disabilities that can't do the regular Tai Chi.
Very cool. Paul?
No question. In particular, I just wanted to comment, I have taken Tai Chi from Jill Miller.
Oh, Jill Mitchell?
Jill Mitchell, through the program. And I actually did a Saturday fishing class for Lacamas Lake.
Okay.
Through, through this program.
Okay.
That was some years ago.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Well, thank you for that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other items from council? Kathy, thank you very much.
And I do, every quarter, I do leave a handful of catalogs out on your counter, and I also leave some in the library. So if you ever are interested in looking one and haven't seen one, you know, please take a look. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we've got a presentation from the East County Family Resource Center and the Children's Home Society. Bridgette, good evening.
Good evening. They're leaving. What I was going to say was amazing how interconnected everything is, because when I first started at the East County Center, community ed was co-funding that position that was there through Jan Strong, and was actually a partner back in 1988, when you first started thinking about buying that building over there. So I'm Bridgette McCleman, I'm with Children's Home Society, and we're lead agency at the family center across the street here. And I think Rose, she put the numbers that I had up on your iPads, so it's technology that's beyond me. Well, not quite. I don't quite need a chair for Zumba, I hope. But we're busy over there. We are running out of space even. So it's an amazing place across the street, and I don't know if any of you are new, I see some familiar faces, but we've now been there since about 2003 as lead agency, when we partnered with the East County Unified Family Center. And so we're now in our, what, almost our 10th year. And business has boomed since we first moved in, and it's probably a sign of the economic times that we are serving more and more people all the time. We also have more partners than we've ever had before, and I think that's an acknowledgement that is really hard to get to Vancouver for services. So people are starting to recognize that co-locating in sites makes it much easier for families. So this year, we have, CIMAR has expanded its services. They took over from Public Health, providing women, infants, and children's services. They then have just taken another room for maternity support services, which was at risk of disappearing when the counties stopped providing it. And they've also taken over Catholic Community Services, children's, school-based children's mental health program. So there are currently three children's mental health providers in the building, which is pretty neat for, for local families, because there's nothing worse than picking up your kid from school and driving 34 miles round trip to access services in Vancouver. So Children's Home Society provides services, CIMAR, as I said, and Columbia River. Columbia River's actually been there since the very beginning of that partnership. They signed on as a supporter back in 1990, when the building started, as did Children's Home Society. It's interesting, we also have Community Services Northwest, which up till now has been doing primarily youth substance abuse prevention groups. The kids are actually mandated to participate in, in some activities, which set them on a pathway to changing their risky behaviors. They're also going to be doing some adult substance abuse counseling there, so that's something new. So that's a lot of space that's been taken up now. We also, the county's looking at co-locating their Waschuggal Community Coalition Coordinator in the building. So it's perfect, because it's a good meeting space. And what all of these people do, we do not sublet space, it's a cost-shared partnership. We don't charge market rents or anything like that. What we do, because we have the building from the city of Waschuggal, what we do is assess the shared costs, and those go out in cost shares. And we provide, Children's Home Society provides the reception staffing, you know, copy, fax, phone system, internet connections, and those sort of things. And we provide some global services. I think if you look at your numbers, I do actually have extra copies, and if the audience would like them. What we do, we provide children's clothing through Northwest Children's Outreach. Now, anybody who's been around 10 years and walked into the center 10 years ago, we had piles of clothes, and the VFW, which is why I was also interested in, in the motion of support you just adopted, the VFW used to bring in piles of stuff every day, but it's really hard to run a clothing closet. It's almost impossible. This is perfect, because Northwest Children's Outreach, we send them what the family needs. They complete an order saying, I've got a boy, 12 years old, he needs some new pants, and they fill the orders. We have a volunteer who picks them up, brings them out here, and we deliver them to the family. So we do that. We do emergency food and stuff. The bus is coming up really soon, and we, we can't wait. You know, the canned foods, you know, we have some canned foods left so far, but we're out of things like, things that go with them, like pasta and spaghetti sauce and baked beans and stuff like that. So that has been growing, and if you look at our numbers, you'll see that the needs really increased. We have computer access. We participated in a program with the state last year, so that people could sign up for various state resources, like TANF and Food Sems. Check their eligibility to save going downtown and standing in a lineup, just, it's a pretty awful place. If you've ever been to the CSO, they will say that, too. So it saves a trip, so it's good access, and the state is really trying to promote this, as they cut back their own staffing. So that's a nice asset there. And then we have Renee, our staff person, who will go above and beyond the call of duty to find resources for people and connect people up. And all of this is made possible in part by support from the city of Waschuggal, support from the Camas Waschuggal Community Chest, the Ser optimists have been wonderful. And then a wide range of individuals and businesses and churches who just bring in donations that we in turn can give away. So I don't know what specifically you would like to hear about this evening, but that's an overview.
Thank you, Bridgette. Questions from council? Paul?
I was just curious, off the top of your head, do you have any idea how many agencies or partners, I guess you call them, work out of the center?
Well, it used to be more, and now CIMAR's picked up several services.
Right.
So the three components of CIMAR, there's Community Services Northwest, Columbia River, we have two different sections there. Then we have various groups that use it as a meeting space, so eight or nine. No, and every partner, we can prorate space, so some people take a room for three days, and another group takes it for two days, so we make up our five days. Unfortunately, with people like mental health providers, there are HIPAA rules that makes it very hard to share space.
Right.
Maintain confidentiality, but if people have a little space, then we have common areas, that amazing room upstairs, and then the rooms downstairs. I mean, that, and result of all that renovations you guys did over there, it's really beautiful space, and it feels right when you go in.
Any other items from council?
Just, I just wanted to mention, if, if anybody was ever curious where all of the food goes from Stuff the Bus, that's where it goes. Well, some of it, anyway.
We invite you to volunteer and help, and, and then we invite you to drop in about three weeks later, where we have this amazing whiz of an accounting person who's also good at organizing canned foods. So she comes out, and you will find food everywhere in the center, and it's, this is an amazing community. It really is.
Bridgette, thank you for being here. Thank you for supplying the information to us, and, and for me, thank you for putting on some of the comments that are on there from your survey as well.
Yeah.
It's always good to see what they're saying firsthand, coming back to you.
Yeah, and that's, we love it, because it's an evidence-based, valid, reliable survey that's done nationally with different things, so when we get outcomes, we like it. You had a.
Yes, does all the Stuff the Bus from the Waschuggal bus go to you? I mean, does.
I, I'm not certain whether they've changed the pattern, but yes, it used to. And that was the competition between Camas and Waschuggal.
Yes, that's, that was my preference.
And then, then some of it would go Camas Fire Department, and some of it, I think the first year, there was some split with Interfaith Treasure House, and, and now I'm not sure what they've worked out. We really just take what we're given.
Thank you.
Which, if it's like last year, they were there late, 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 unloading those buses.
Well, they've actually got more organized. If you were there the first year, it was total chaos, because they didn't put the stuff in good bags inside. So, and people donated the heaviest stuff they could, and we had three buses. And it was like, you know, your worst vision of the hoarders, you know, was like those buses, and carrying them off, you just had, you know, 100 people just passing them. Now they got a little smarter, and they come in boxes, and they're more coordinated. But probably if you volunteered that first year, it was the experience of a lifetime, you know? Just amazing.
Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Bridgette. Okay, moving a little bit out of order, are there any amendments to the rest of the agenda for this evening? Rose, do we have any correspondence?
No.
Okay. I'm going to hold off on public comment, if it's okay with everybody, and go through the consent agenda, because right after that, we come right back to public comment again. So unless there's somebody that's dying to get up and, and speak to council right at this moment. Okay, moving to our consent agenda, this evening, we have a consent agenda of five items. Our council minutes of October 15th, our workshop minutes of October 22nd, our regular accounts payable claims in the amount of $333,049.4. And Agenda Bill 6612, setting a public hearing for the 2013 property tax levy. And Agenda Bill 67-12, setting a public hearing for the 2013 budget ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that the consent agenda be passed, as read.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I request to pull item number A under consent agenda.
Any other items? Okay, we are left with items B, C, D, and E. I heard a unanimous consent, if there are no other objections to the other items. Okay, that port, items B, C, D, and E are passed. Item A, our council minutes of October 15th, 2012. Jennifer?
Yes, I just had one correction on the page that has the roll call, and the motion itself to excuse, it says commissioners, Greenly and Freeman, and I just would like to have that corrected to council members.
It's been corrected. The signature.
And that is what I had. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve city council regular meeting minutes from October 15th, 2012.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the corrected minutes of October 15th. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, with that, it brings us to our opportunity in the meeting for any members of the public that would like to address council. Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, council. I'm Markford Tellam with the West Columbine Gorge Humane Society. I'm on the board of directors, I'm the PR manager, volunteer manager, and Cooper Scooper and everything else. As you may or may not know, there's been kind of an ongoing issue with our new neighbor from Ballard Salvage and Diving. He doesn't like the noise of dogs barking from our shelter. We've been working with the police chief on this issue. He's filed, I don't know how many complaints about it, and we've tried to work with him on this, and it just doesn't seem like he wants to work too much with us. So I wanted to let you guys know what we are doing. We've got a volunteer who is a sound engineer, and we're looking at a design for a sound abatement wall. We are testing sound abatement in anechoic materials that will deaden the sound. We're looking at volunteers to build it, and we're going to work with the city to get it approved, if that's the case, which this should help deaden any sound between us and his building. However, the guy last night decided, if you do or do not know, he installed an air horn that goes off right next to our property, and so any times the dogs bark, the air horn goes off on audible, so it, it is very disturbing to our volunteers. It also gets set off every time a truck drives by. Last night, he sat and honked his horn until the thing went off, got the dogs barking, and then came and yelled at all our volunteers and used obscenities. We called the police. Of course, every time the police show up, he's already gone. So it's borderline harassment coming from him, and again, we're trying to work with the guy, but I'm starting to lose volunteers that are willing to come down at night, because they're afraid of the guy. So I'm working with Police Chief Mitchell. I met with him again today and told him our concerns. I've read every single public noise ordinance rule, and we are within the rules, and he is violating rule number 9730201 through 5. He is in violation of every single one of those. I do not want to be a bad neighbor. This is business coming into our area, I'm all for that. I just do not understand, if you move next to an airport, there's going to be airplanes? If you move next to a school, there's going to be kids? And if you move next to a dog shelter, there's going to be dog barking occasionally? So I just want to let you know that if you have any concerns, please contact myself or Tamra, our executive director. We want to work with the city, we want to work with our neighbor, but at the same time, we want the harassment and the weird tactics to stop. And this, this horn that he's installed does nothing to help the dogs from barking. We also just had a volunteer give us $30,000. We built an outdoor cat enclosure that the city approved, and now the cats don't want to even go out in it when this horn is going off. So it's causing undue stress to our animals, and I, again, I'm not quite sure what we can do, but we are working on some solutions from our end. So I wanted to let the city know we're being proactive, and I've instructed all of our volunteers not to call him, not to email him, not to honk when they drive by, to completely stay away from the guy. And as you know, the news did run one story. Believe me, I've been contacted by every news agency, and I've squished them doing a bunch of stories, because I just don't feel that needs to be done. The one that was run, they were going to run it regardless, that's why I went out there and kind of steered it in a semi-decent direction. So I just wanted to let you know that your little animal agency over here is trying to work on this issue, we're trying to be proactive. We're trying to be proactive and we want, if you have any communications or concerns, please address myself or Tamra. And we want to make sure that we stay within our guidelines and we work with the city to resolve this long term. Okay?
Mark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dave, do you have an update on what we're doing from the city's standpoint on it as well?
We're looking at sound abatement efforts out there as well. So I heard what you just said and I hadn't heard that, so I need to make sure the chief is coordinating with you.
We're doing that on our own. I know some city people came out to look at putting some sound detonating on the inside of the building, which will help because if you've ever been in the dog kennel area when you get 14 dogs barking, it's bad. So again, there's a lot of things that we're doing, but as our volunteer agency on our own, we're working on at least a design for a wall that would go up with sound detonating and it should resolve it. However, if we go to all this effort and we build it and he still complains, I don't know what else we can do.
I'll have the chief contact you because we're also almost all the way through with a external mitigation measure as well. So I wasn't aware of this last part. That's fine.
Yeah, we're doing that on our own and we wanted to propose that. So again, I just wanted to let everyone know, we are trying to be proactive here and we want everyone to get along. And I just don't understand why the guy's taking it to the level he is. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address council? John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wondered about the National Veterans Remembrance proclamation. Does the city have any kind of a policy about hiring returning veterans or is that even legal to give them preferential treatment?
It is.
It's federal.
Yeah.
It is legal to do, yes.
Is it proper to terminate preferential treatment, though?
They get some points on certain issues, which is all federal.
Okay, so yeah.
Yeah, great, thanks.
You bet. Any other members? Marilyn, good evening. It has been a while.
It has been a while. Well, I decided to leave you guys alone for a while. You can only stand so much harassment. I'm Marilyn Tyrell. I live at 950 G Street in Waschuggah. I know that you're all working on the quality of life and I don't want to live in a place where people come and harass me about, you know, "I'm not doing this" or "my house looks like that" or whatever. But we have a problem in our block and actually on several places on G Street. And the problem is this. The lady across the street from me, 935 maybe, has used her lawn to create a large garden, which is, a couple of years ago, it was quite lovely, but right now, it's, in the last two years, it's been unattended. And without watering and the rain, we've been getting concerned that the whole thing was going to go on fire because pedestrians are back and forth and cigarettes and all that stuff. And she applied for, what do you call it, a rewrite of her mortgage and had quite a low assessment on her place. And then her neighbor next door just happened within a month or two to do the same thing and had a lower assessment than she expected. And when she asked why, she was told that it was, part of it was related to the fact that the place next to her was not looking so great. There's so much growth in there that you can park an SUV and not know it's there. And they've been parking on the lawn, which I understand is not kosher, but, you know, we're not fussing about that. We're just fussing about the fact that it looks so awful. And we're wondering if code enforcement someplace could do something about that.
I bet we can at least make contact and see what the situation is and probably offer some alternatives as well. Rose, could you follow up with Sherri in the morning?
Thank you. It's right across from 950 Rose and I think it's 935, but I'm not sure.
Sounds like we can pick it out. Got two.
Well, if you can't see it, you're not looking. Thank you.
Thanks, Marilyn. Brent?
I have a question for city administrator Scott. What exactly, and I'm new to the council, what are the, what resources do we have for code enforcement in the city of Waschuggah?
We have one code enforcement officer.
And are they busy?
I believe they're pretty busy.
Okay, just wondered.
Complaint based program.
And that's in addition to our inspectors that are out there as well that, to some degree, end up being code enforcement officers, at least on the construction sites and that type of stuff, even if they're not inspecting, they're just driving by and seeing some of the developers doing things that they shouldn't be, they call them back into line.
Joyce?
What are the penalties of not following the code or for parking on the lawn? I'm under the impression that there aren't any.
Well, no, we have civil penalties that we can invoke. It's not our practice, though, to move toward those unless it's an absolute last resort and we are failing to gain compliance. We're about compliance and educating folks and letting them know that they're having a problem. I can't remember the last time, at least during my tenure, where we've had to invoke penalties, I think only once or twice. So there are tools if we have a reticent property owner.
Any other members of the public that would like to address council? Okay, moving to mayor's report, I have just one item for you this evening and it is item for your calendars. On Saturday, December 8th, we have scheduled our annual Christmas tree lighting and our second year of our lighted Christmas parade downtown. And we'll be giving you more information on that very shortly. But that will be the evening of Saturday, December 8th. I believe that same Friday and Saturday, the Waschuggah Lions Club are also planning to do their auction and decorated Christmas tree auction as well across the streets.
What time?
Don't know. We'll get you those details. Items from council?
I just, I had a question about the use of that air horn. Is that within code?
Chief Mitchell doesn't believe that it is. He's working on that.
The audible portion of it?
Right.
Other items? Dave?
Okay. Great, thank you. I just want to give a quick thank you to the Waschuggah High School Interact Club for their Halloween Eve Monster Mash Carnival and Party for elementary age students held here. It was a lot of fun. My daughter thoroughly enjoyed it and I think they just really, the kids just really did a good job. Halloween night is, you know, always a lot of fun in different places, but this year it was, you know, open to all of the elementary school kids and I thought it was really well done. Also, had a couple of things. Stuff the Bus, Bridget already mentioned, it's officially started and it runs through December 7th. Community members are invited to drop off non-perishable canned or boxed foods, household supplies, and unwrapped toys at any Waschuggah school. And also, the Waschuggah High School Holiday Marketplace Bazaar is taking place on November 17th at the high school. If you haven't attended, please consider it. The bazaar offers 200 booths of handcrafted and commercial products. And longtime participants consider the Waschuggah High School Holiday Bazaar to be both a holiday tradition and a great resource for shopping for the holidays. So that's all I have.
Dave?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Public Safety Committee meeting will be on the 26th of November. That's a change. It's usually held the third Monday, but we didn't want to get involved in Thanksgiving week there. The other thing is, I have to ask the council's assistance here. For the last nine months on my calendar has been a trip to Kauai. I've asked for hardship pay and been denied, by the way.
Would you be happy to go in your place?
I understand. However, you'll be tied up with the same council meeting that I'm going to ask the council to delay. On the 19th of November, we're going to vote on the budget. I'd like very much to be here for that, but I leave on the 18th for Kauai and it's a long commute. Is it possible, my colleagues, to delay that for a week? I understand from talking with Dave Scott this afternoon that a week's delay will put us up to the 3rd of December and it won't, it won't kill us. We still have plenty of time to adopt the budget. It's due by the, what, 31st?
31st of December, yes.
December, right.
For the budget itself.
I was hoping it wasn't 31st of November.
No. 31st of November is for the adverum taxes have to be passed by that point.
Okay.
The ordinance in the, yes. Yeah, that's true. The 30th of November.
And as Mr. Scott and I discussed this afternoon, my position on that one is such a minority position that I don't think my absence on that particular issue is going to make any effect on anything. So please feel free to vote your conscience on that one. I'm not sure exactly how we do this. Dave, do we have an answer on that one? I hit you with that quarter of four this afternoon, so that's not really fair.
If the council would direct us to have the ordinance for your consideration on December 3rd, then that's what we would do. But I think the public hearing should happen on November 19th.
Yeah, that, a couple of quick points on that. One, I don't know that a delay is going to be anything we couldn't deal with as well. It wouldn't necessarily, and I might almost suggest that we not delay it to December 3rd, but take it to November 26th and make that a special meeting instead of just a workshop meeting to include the budget discussion. More of my question, though, Dawn, would be in regards to the public hearings that we just set. We've set those for the 19th. It's my understanding that a council member who is not involved in the discussions during a public hearing, unless they go back through and read the minutes, go through the tapes, everything else, would be eligible to vote on that item?
Yeah, I think that they would have to go back and review everything that was presented at the public hearing before they'd be eligible to vote.
Dave, when is your return date?
25th.
So that's still doable, given as soon as we get much of any public comment at all or anything during the public hearing other than council discussion itself.
Is that something that can be sent via the internet to our Dropbox?
Potentially. It's just, it's IT's turnaround of the actual information coming through on the audiovisual system itself and getting it ready to be outbound.
Okay, because I could review it on the plane coming back.
I think, though, the first one, also, though, we've got a question to council if you wish to delay the actual meeting. In clarification, the 19th is just the first date that we've set that you potentially could vote on it without a special meeting. That doesn't mean that it necessarily would be voted on that evening. You may have other things that cause that to move naturally anyway.
At the 19th, couldn't we just continue the action item?
You could.
Just do it that way? Wouldn't that be the easiest way?
You could hold the public hearing, but refrain from making any final determinations.
And then could we set a special meeting on the 26th that day or could we do it on the 3rd of December, whichever?
You could do it either one. My concern would be as you back it up, if other things delay it, now we're getting back into the holidays of literally bringing in a special meeting to make sure that we do pass it in time.
I'd just say, I'm fine with either the 26th or the 3rd work for me.
Me, too. Whatever works.
I'm also fine with either. I'm just thinking there are a lot of new council members and it might actually take more than one workshop to get through all the questions and, you know, back and forth and so on and so forth of going through the budget. So, I mean, it's potentially, it's potential that we wouldn't even really be able to get to it till the 3rd of December. So we might take two workshops.
And that's my concern for my colleagues and I appreciate your forbearance.
Sounds like we've got some flexibility.
I'll get even with you later.
I figured the piper would have to be paid on this one.
Other?
I will also warn you that I will be flying back from Amsterdam on the 25th of November, so the 26th might be a little tired, but I should be here.
Assuming all your connections happen.
Did you get hardship pay for that one?
No.
No?
I'll, for instance, I'll be in Indio, California for the week, including February 10th, so...
For the week, including February 10th?
Yes.
February's a long ways off.
Yes, but Administrator Scott's already sent us a scheduled meeting for them.
Okay. Any other items from council? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second?
By acclamation.
I've got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just a quick reminder that next week, our meeting is on Tuesday evening, not on Monday evening.